My favorite, well, there's a lot of favorite stuff. This is a weird term. We need to have one of those. Here's the corner. He's actually a better comedic actor than I am. You ever seen him on the Sunday Night Live? It's hilarious.
Okay, I have seen your name, Les Presnick.
So my name is? Oh, you're the one that says that.
Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to the November 1st, 2018 Gilbert Town Council meeting. Thank you all of you for being here today. I will call this meeting to order and turn the time over to Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you very much. We're honored to kick off tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance as we normally do. When I first moved to Gilbert in 1996, we had a town election and I didn't know who to vote for, so I went to someone named Greg Stradling. I said, "Who do I vote for? We have a council election." And he told me, "Les Presnick is a good man. You need to vote for him." He was my very first vote in a town election and we're honored tonight. I asked him if he could come up in the absence of our scouts and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, Mayor, and we're glad that he's served our town and will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Thank you. Everybody please stand. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Les. At this time, Reverend Judy Cato of the Victory AME Church is here to offer our invocation. Thank you, Judy, for being here. We appreciate you. Also a Gilbert Leadership graduate?
Yes.
Just thought I'd give that a little bit.
Class of '26. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor Peterson, and council members. Let us pray. Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we thank you that this city and this mayor and this council thinks it's important that we start the business meeting with prayer. In this country, in this climate in this country where there is hatred and violence and divisiveness, we're glad that there is somewhere that prayer is still considered an important thing. And as we move forward with this council meeting, let these council members and this mayor look to you for guidance, look to you for direction. And I know that to say that love is an important thing sounds like a fluffy, kind of soft statement, but if you look at, lead things with love, that's how you approach everything, then that's how you approach your thoughts, that's how you approach your mind, and that's how you approach your decisions. So we thank you, Lord, that you have guidance over this council. We thank you that you are here. We thank you for your presence, and we ask that everything that is done be in your name. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Working to get one council member on the phone, I will ask the clerk to conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jim Daniels?
Here.
Vice Mayor Victor Peterson. Councilmembers.
Oh, council.
Vice Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
I can't read, I'm sorry. Councilmember Scott Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson. Councilmember Jordan Ray?
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor?
Here.
Aquarum is present.
Thank you. I know Councilmember Peterson will be joining us shortly. We have two proclamations, or excuse me, one proclamation, one recognition today. Councilmember Anderson will assist us with Agenda Item 5, oh, excuse me, Agenda Item 1, and Councilmember Ray will assist us with Agenda Item 2.
I'm here, and I apologize for the trouble. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
I count this as a special privilege to be able to present this proclamation tonight celebrating Veterans Week. I don't have the words to be able to describe how much I reverence our veterans in this country and for the sacrifice and for the service they've done to protect our families, our friends, our communities, and indeed this nation. So it's a very special honor. And I'm going to ask Jim and Phil if you come up and join me here. Do you have any other members of your committee here by chance that might want to come up also?
And Dave Rosenfeld.
Dave Rosenfeld? Right here. Yes, yes. Just very quickly, before I let them introduce themselves, and you can say anything you'd like to say about this proclamation and about Veterans Week. We're coming up on the 100-year anniversary of the armistice which ended World War I, which by the way is when we started Veterans Day. And it's been our privilege as a country to honor all of those who have served so valiantly to protect us. Just yesterday, I was reading from a diary from one of the veterans of World War I, and he was talking about how thankful he was every day. He got up every day, was thankful and happy that he was alive. And this is the choice that these veterans make in protecting us, the choice to lay down their lives is necessary. And we count that as being our heroes, for sure. Let me ask the three of you, if you'd like to say anything. Jim, we'll start with you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Lycans. I'm a U.S. Army Vietnam veteran, and I'm the chairman of the committee this year. We've got a tremendous event. It's a week from today. It'll be right on the lawn here, and we hope to have between 400 and 600 people at our event this year. So I've got some flyers here that I'm going to leave on the back table, and when you leave, if you know a veteran, or you just want to come and honor our veterans, we'd love to have you. The event is, like I said, on the lawn. It'll be from 11:00 until 1:00. And we have, we've tried to incorporate a lot of youth into our program. We've got the Williams Field High School Band, the Campbell Verdi Choir, 4th graders from Settlers Point will be here to sing patriotic music, and we have military vehicles also that we'll have on display. We also have eight or nine food vendors here in town that will be providing lunch, so we'll be able to provide a free lunch for all in attendance. And then the other thing that's very near and dear to a veteran's heart is a challenge coin. And for every veteran that shows up, we have challenge coins that we'll be presenting to the veterans. So if you do have an opportunity, we'd love to see you at our event, and thank you very much.
Dave Rosenfeld, I am a 22-year Army veteran, and the one thing that he did leave out is that we will actually be landing a helicopter out here. So don't be shocked when you see it come in.
And Les Presnick, I am one of the two civilians that serve on this committee. I've just been hanging around so long that they don't know how to get rid of me, but it's quite an honor to serve with all the veterans. I give them a hard time because it's kind of like having a bunch of U of A and ASU graduates in the same room, except it's Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, and Coast Guard, and everybody belonged to the best arm of the service. And as far as I'm concerned, they're all great. So please come out. It's a great opportunity. It's a great celebration.
Thank you. As I read just a portion of this proclamation to give to you three, again, it starts off, "Whereas Veterans Day, November 11th, is set aside annually for celebrating our military veterans, and was begun as the commemoration of the end of hostilities of World War I, which went into effect on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month." And then I think the summary that the mayor has at the end is very pertinent. "I encourage Gilbert citizens to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans and thank them for their service to our country. I invite civic and fraternal organizations, places of worship, schools, businesses, and the media to support this national observance with commemorative expressions and programs." And let me add, as we end this portion of the presentation, if we have any veterans in the audience, would you please stand? Do we have any? Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Welcome home. You are our heroes.
That proclamation was a great segment to this next recognition. We want to first invite up Dan Irving and Scott Essex, please. And then to the person of the night, Andy Lorenz, if you would come forward with family and friends and coworkers, managers, come on up. I know there's a few of you in the audience. Come on up. I am going to pass the microphone over to Dan and have him explain what we're doing here.
Thank you very much. I'm Dan Irving. I'm the state chair for Employer Support for the Guard and Reserve, and I have with me Mr. Scott Essex. He's a two, he is the
Chair?
Chair. Chair emeritus. I have trouble with that word. I don't know why, but I do. Anyway, he's the chair emeritus. So we brought him along with us to help us with his presentation tonight. So we have a long history with the town of Gilbert, ESGR does, Employer Support for the Guard. In 2011, they won the highest award we could present an employer, and that it was the Secretary of Defense Freedom Award. They won that in 2011, won several other awards. Very supportive of their veterans, very supportive of their Guard and Reserve members that work for them. So we are here tonight. This is really a special presentation. I think it's probably the, one of the most, it's one of the most personal presentations because tonight, we're going to award Andy Lorenz a Patriotic Employer Award, and that award can only be awarded by the person's employee, the service member. ESGR can't submit this award. It has to be submitted by the service member, and that's what makes this award so special. It really does. And I just, you know, I'm honored to be here to be able to present this tonight. I'm going to turn this over to Scott. Scott's going to read. Unfortunately, Albert couldn't be here with us tonight, so we have something that he had wrote, and Scott, if you'll just read it.
So this is part of the nomination form, and Albert says, "During my current deployment to Helmand Province, Afghanistan, Andy Lorenz has provided unwavering support by covering my position while I'm deployed, as well as providing care packages. Andy Lorenz has afforded me the opportunity to serve while ensuring I am informed of updates to my position. Andy continues to improve our workstation while also maintaining our work area during my tenure in Afghanistan. It is solely because Andy, of Andy, that I am able to serve and focus on the mission at hand. His support and patriotism have been a vital part to my success, both overseas and at home. I highly recommend Andy Lorenz for the Patriot Award, as its definition is Andy's true persona and reflects what he has done in order to support my duties."
Okay, I will now present the award, and I'm going to read the awards because you can't see it, so let me read it here. "The Office of the Secretary of Defense, Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve recognizes Andy Lorenz, Town of Gilbert, is a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Force. On behalf of the Secretary of Defense, our ESGR National Chair, Craig McKinley, I present you your Patriot Award." I'm going to present you also with a Patriot pin. We encourage you to wear it on your lapel. We are presenting you with a Patriot pill, or Patriot pin, okay? So you can put that on your lapel and let everybody know that you're a Patriot. Wear it proudly because you're a true Patriot. All right, thank you.
It was about five years ago, right around this time, when Albert was hired by the town. I actually sat on the interview panel, and it was one of those choices for me. It was a no-brainer. I think he was the last person that we interviewed, but, you know, it was just the way he carried himself as an individual and as a Marine. You could just tell he was perfect for the position that we were, he was applying for. I miss him very much. I'm glad to, if nobody knows this, for the most part, that he is actually on his way back to the United States. He will be actually back in country tomorrow. He left Germany this morning, I believe, so hopefully we'll get to see him here real soon. So, so once again, I'd like to thank Albert for everything he has done. I'd like to thank the town for all the support that they give us. And other than that, thanks to all of my coworkers here. Really appreciate it. It's an honor.
The town has amazing employees who work really hard. So on behalf of the town council and the mayor, Andy, thank you for continuing to make the town of Gilbert such a great place and make all of the staff proud of what you've done. Thank you.
That completes the Proclamations and Presentations portion of our agenda, and I'll just take, I think what they call it at the legislature is a point of personal privilege. I hope that's okay. It's not really standard for us, but I got to meet a great American citizen just a few minutes ago as well, Gretchen Obar. Gretchen, will you raise your hand? Gretchen's here. She's a council member from Wasilla, Alaska. She really loves local government because she's on vacation right now, and she came to a council meeting. So, Gretchen, thanks for being here, and it's fun to share stories. Welcome to Gilbert. We're glad you're here. We have two communications from citizens, I understand, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, we have Paul Rodriguez. If you'd like to come down to the podium, give us your name and city or town of residence, and then we'll have Victoria Stallings, please.
My name is Paul Rodriguez. I'm really, I want to apologize to the council and to everyone here. I kind of feel I'm wasting your time, but I don't feel I had a choice. I'm a, I've done some volunteer work in Gilbert, and among my volunteer tasks is trying to address the feral cat situation in Gilbert. The reason I'm here is because some members of the Gilbert Police Department told me that there have been some changes and that I should talk to the town council, and so I'm doing what I was asked to do. What I did, what I've been doing for about 12 years is I've done some trapping of these cats, got them spayed and neutered, and then I go out and I feed them. Now, there's a number of people in Gilbert doing this. It's an irritation to a lot of residents to have these cats around. I fully appreciate that. I personally have a brother who's allergic to all animals. I mean, allergic to the point where it could lead to really a serious medical condition. So I fully respect the concerns that a lot of residents have. And honestly, I, again, I apologize for having to bother you with this, but again, the Gilbert Police Department said, "Look, if you want to talk to somebody, talk to your council. We don't have anything to do with this." The specific ordinance, I guess, that was passed earlier this year says that you can't feed on town property. And they said, "Well, you can, you can also contact the Parks and Recreation Department, the director," which I did. And I have, I sent him an email, and two weeks later, he sent me an email back saying, "Well, let me just tell you, one of the places where there are seven cats that are spayed and neutered, I call it the Christmas Tree Lot. I think we all know where that is. It's the Christmas Tree Lot that's at Gilbert Road and Elliott, where every Christmas season, trees are for sale there. So I think we all know where that is. It's a vacant lot. I didn't even know it was town property and all candor. On the western end of that lot, there's a little driveway, and these seven cats show up every night. Now, somebody else spayed and neutered them. I'm not going to take credit for that. Somebody else did that. But by, by feed them every night, in effect, what those cats do is they keep other cats from coming into that specific area. So it's very important that those cats stay there. I know, and we're probably about 150 feet from anyone's house, so I don't think we're bothering anybody there. But again, the Gilbert Police Department said that, "Look, if you've got an issue with this, you've got to talk to the council. We don't have anything to do with it." I did send an email to Mr. Carmona, and he said, "Oh, do I, am I supposed to stop talking now?"
If you wouldn't mind just wrapping up, we do about three minutes for each communication.
Okay, so I have like, what, five seconds?
Just take, take a moment to see.
Okay, well, let me, let me wrap it up. Again, I feel badly about wasting everyone's time here, but I, I really believe that what I'm doing is helping Gilbert in the sense that by keeping those cats there, we're keeping other cats from moving into that neighborhood. So the bottom line is, I really came here just to volunteer. What I mean by that is, I think there's some things that can be done. Then maybe people have already looked at this, but if somebody doesn't want their cats in the neighborhood, then I think there's some things that could be done to address that situation, but at the same time, those cats have to go somewhere. And take my word for it, we've got probably a dozen of them right in our front yard, so it's not like I'm, this is somebody else's problem. It's my problem too. And I had, I talked to one woman, she said, "Oh, yeah, those are the ones that came and urinated on my rag-top Camaro." And I said, "I had that happen too." Not with a Camaro, by the way, but I've had that experience too. So it's a pretty tough situation, but I want to just stress that I'd like to volunteer to see if there's something else we can do, because Mr. Carmona said, "No, I'm not going to give you permission to feed there." He didn't tell me why, so I don't really know what the details are of that, but all I can tell you is there are literally not dozens, not hundreds, but literally thousands of these cats in Gilbert, and I and several other people are trying to rein it in. We're doing the best we can. I've got some ideas. I'll share them with any member, and I'll, I'll send an email from Paul Rodriguez to each of you. I'll try and get that out, you know, tomorrow, no later than Monday. All I want to do is volunteer to address this situation, but I also wanted to do what the police said to do, to come down here and talk.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Paul, for being here and for alerting us. And we will make sure that staff follows up with you. We cannot respond because this item is not on our agenda, but we can do some follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your email will be helpful. Thank you.
I have Victoria Stallings. Please come down to the podium. Give us your name and city or town of residence, please.
Hi, I'm Victoria Stallings. I've been a citizen, a member of Gilbert for about 30 years, and I wanted to address the feral cat issue and the challenges here in Gilbert. One unspayed female cat and offspring can produce 450,000 kittens in seven years. In 2008, there was an estimated 350,000 feral cats in Maricopa County. The remedy was to trap, neuter, and spay, and these were programs that were set up to minimize the growth of feral cat colonies. Feral cats live in colonies and are protective of their territory. Once established, they do not let other cats join their group. When these small cat colonies are neutered and spayed, they continue to stay small. If the cats are not returned to their original location, it leaves the area open for new cats to move in, which may increase the colony size at a rapid rate. There's a community of volunteers who've been working behind the scenes for many years. These community members have volunteered their time, energy, and financial resources to minimize the feral cat community and the growth of the feral cat community in Gilbert by trapping, neutering, and spaying the feral cats. In fact, there's one volunteer who has trapped over 500 feral cats at her own expense. There are many, and there are some of, they're some of the most compassionate individuals in the community. Not only do they trap the cats and return them to their original location, they continue to provide food and water. The New City Ordinance stating it is unlawful to feed or place food for wild animals or feral animals on town-owned property or public right-of-ways leads me to believe that the town was shortsighted in developing a plan which would limit the volunteers who are actively keeping the feral cat population to a minimum through trapping, not to mention they're given punitive fines for their years of service to our community. I think Gilbert can come up with a better plan for minimizing the feral cat community instead of fining those working so hard to keep it in control. Please consider developing a committee which would include some of these community members who are experts in feral cats to join the, join the city in developing a compassionate plan to address the feral cat challenges. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
We're unable to do the, an exchange here of questions and answers, but we can definitely follow up with you.
All right.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, does that complete the communications from citizens? Yes, it does, Mayor. Thank you. We do have a consent calendar in front of us tonight. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, my first question would be, Councilmember Peterson, do you have anything that you would like to pull off of the agenda?
No, I do not.
Thank you. With that said, Mayor, did anybody else? No, thank you. With that said, I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar, Item 3, 4, 5, 6, A through F, 7, 8, and 9.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to our public hearing items. I understand we have several cards of individuals who wish to speak. Councilmembers, do you have anything you would like to pull to discuss?
12A.
12A.
12A is under, is it under public hearing?
It is.
Okay. 12A is the item that I have the most cards to speak on, and then I just have one for Item 12.
Okay, so we will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 10 and 11. I will close the public hearing on those agenda items and entertain a motion.
Move to approve Items 10 and 11.
Second.
Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 12. We'll do a quick staff presentation on that Agenda item. And we do have a code where we follow in public hearing Agenda Items where individuals wish to speak. Thank you, Kevin. Keith?
Mayor Daniel, members of the council, good evening. I get that all the time, by the way, so don't worry. No worries. So the project that is before you tonight is for the Andalucia Project, which is located at the southwest corner of Ray and Valvista, about 1.2 miles southeast of the Santan Village Shopping Center, and about two miles to the south, or north, I guess, if you want to put it, of the Loop 202 freeway. So just briefly, the, an overview of this project. It's, I already stated where it was located, but it's about 4.27 gross acres, about 12 acres net. And the applicant is proposing two requests before you tonight. A minor general plan amendment, or general plan amendment from shopping center to residential, five to eight dwelling units per acre, with the density being a little over seven dwelling units per acre. And then the rezone request is from shopping center to single-family detached zoning with a, with a planned area development overlay. So this residential request is, is a departure from the original commercial land use on the property that was, that was envisioned. Since the rezoning in the mid-'90s, this property has remained vacant, as you know. An abundance of commercial development exists in this immediate area and has been pulled or gravitated towards the south and to the east of this property at the mall location and along the 202 freeway. Kind of making this property kind of, pretty much not as viable for commercial uses. So that is the, the main reason why the applicant is requesting these two, the zone change and the minor general plan amendment. So general plan compliance, in a nutshell, they are satisfying a few goals. One is, goals and policies. One is to maintain a balance of housing types and add to the variety of housing. And, and as it's stated on here, this is a type of housing that really doesn't exist in this area. And, and we feel that it will support the retail that's in that immediate area, especially on that northeast corner and the south, northwest corner and the southeast corner, quite, quite nicely. The proposed development plan, 101 lots, as stated, seven, a little over seven dwelling units an acre. And they have about, a little over three, about three and a half acres of open space, about 29%. So you can see this development plan in front of you. The lots are about 33 by 80. They're a little, about, about 2,600 square feet. They have 20-foot garages with drive, or 20-foot garage with a driveway. Front yard faces the private street. They have these little optional accessory structures that are going to be built along the street as well for certain lots, AC units in the rear. So here's your little lot, the lot diagram of what it, what it's typically going to look like. Here's a conceptual street scene. As you can see, the appearance along the street, as you would be looking down the street. We have not reviewed the, the standard plans yet for the design of the homes, so that will be something that we will look at later. This is just a conceptual design as for now. So the applicant is also requesting a few deviations from our, or modifications to our zoning ordinance. And as you can see in this table, there are about five of them. The applicant is requesting to vary the minimum lot size or a deviation from 3,000 square feet down to 2,610. They're also proposing to reduce the height of the buildings allowed in that zoning district from third, from 36 feet to 30, and have all two-story homes. A deviation for three-foot setback on the front to, to allow for that optional casita, or, or actually, they're calling it a bonus room. And then a rear setback of five feet where 10 is required. And then they are also requesting a 65% lot coverage for all of these lots, which will be two-story homes. So we did, there were three neighborhood meetings that were, that were held for this project. 105 people attended the first meeting and had quite a few concerns. The second meeting was just with homeowner, homeowners to the, to the south of the project that immediately border the project to discuss design issues and things. And then the second, the third neighborhood meeting in February had about 50, about half the number of attendees. They still had a lot of the same concerns, which, some of them, I know you've seen them in your staff report, but for the benefit of some, some members of the public in the audience, they had concerns about increased traffic volumes along Ray and Valvista and accidents, access point concerns, the increased density adjacent to SF8 zoning, the visual impact of two-story homes adjacent to Ashland Ranch, noise impacts of the park in the southwest corner and some of the trails. They were concerned about their home values or housing values actually being lowered by this more intense or dense product. And then they were concerned about negative impacts on Ashland Ranch's community parks, and also impacts to their schools, to their school and the potential increase in students. So that concludes my presentation. And staff is, is recommending approval of the general plan amendment and the rezone. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. The applicant is also here tonight, and they may have a presentation as well, if you allow them to do that.
Yes, that's part of our code, actually, so I follow the rules. Any questions to staff from council? All right, the applicant's invited to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor Peterson, and members of the council. My name is Stephen Earl, and I am a resident of Gilbert. With me tonight is Reed and Sabrina Porter. They are also 23-year residents of the town of Gilbert. Reed has been the president of Trend Homes, Ryland Homes, and CalAtlantic Homes. And so in those three positions, he's built thousands of homes in the town. He left CalAtlantic last year in order to create this new company called New Village Homes. Purpose of this company is to deal with these kinds of leftover parcels, or infill parcels in the town, that are, are difficult to deal with when they don't have the use that was originally intended. In this case, the, that was commercial. But after 20, more than 20 years, and with commercial going to all four corners to the, one mile to the north, and all four corners one mile to the south, and all of Santan Mall, yeah, it simply has languished, and the attempts to develop it commercially have not succeeded. And so then what do you do with a leftover parcel? There are, every city in the valley has to deal with this question, vacant land, especially at corners. Do you put apartments on them? Do you put rowhouse, townhomes? We wanted to do something pretty special here, and you can see from this rendered perspective of the street scene, we're dealing with single-family detached, what we call villa units. They are two stories, not three. They have a one-story bonus or detached structure in the front. Not all the lots, probably 40 to 50% will have that structure. The rest will not. And so that's the reason we showed in the middle, that courtyard area, that wherever there is not that room, then you, you have an outdoor space in front of the home. This is obviously the parcel that's here. You see all the commercial that's in the immediate area, leading to a need for some difference of use. We humbly believe that rather than apartments or rowtown homes or court homes, that having an upscale type of home that you can see from this rendering, where people can, you know, candidly, they may be young professionals, professionals, or they may be people like me, where all our children are raised and gone, and we no longer want to maintain a backyard and, and spend our, our weekends in the yard. So we, we choose a place that, where the maintenance is taken care of by the HOA. So these front yards you see along this private street are installed by the developer and maintained by the HOA. So that you'll see, what we're showing you is what you'd actually see over time. This is an important exhibit to show how these actually function, because we've had people say, "Well, they look too close together. How do they actually work?" This shows the center, private drive, and you'll notice that there are lanes that are about eight and a half feet wide, but the total width of the drive, the private drive is 26 feet. That's because you need that for the fire, but we don't want the motorists to think they've got 26 feet of concrete to drive around in. So we specifically designed this with the town's help so that people would feel this is an intimate, Spanish village setting where they are not the predominant element that should be using this, this little private dive. People can walk across the street to their friends' homes and feel safe in doing that. There's a center gutter that you can see, and then sidewalks on the other sides. We also brought the bonus room forward a little bit for the same reason, that you're driving in an intimate setting, not in a thoroughfare. Another couple of things you'll see from this drawing is that every car has a two-car garage and two cars in the, can have up to two cars in that driveway in front. In fact, the first eight feet of that unit, if I go back one, you can see that that, there's an overhang. So we wanted to show that the, typically, when you get to these single-family homes that are higher density, you get a garage dominant look, and it's not attractive. So we wanted to have that garage door set way back from the face of the building, about eight feet. So cars could actually be shaded in, in that environment. So in this environment, you can see that even the biggest truck that's built today can fit in that driveway. Why is that important? Because in a lot of these kinds of projects, you have cars parking on the street or next to garages that don't fit, and you end up having not enough parking for people to come to visit. We, we're not allowing any parking on the street itself. There'll be numerous signs of no parking. But there are, in the community, 55 spaces in addition to the ones next to people's homes. This is another view of that same thing, but highlighting how they live in these homes. So not only do you have the front yard space and the courtyards in the front, but you have courtyards on the side, that they're 13 feet wide, and then where the door is, it narrows to six and then opens back up to nine feet. Now, why is that important? Because that's in a well-articulated, attractive side yard that ends up looking like this, so that you can have an indoor-outdoor living. These large sliding doors are a part of the home design. So you can have indoor-outdoor living with tables, chairs, spas, barbecues, water features, plants. So you can have a very nice place that doesn't require a lot of maintenance, but is a beautiful place to live. And that's a rendering of how it would look in this setting. So how does this all fit together into this plot? Well, one of the things that Keith noted is, is that I think the town requires about 15% open space. This project has almost 30, so almost double the amount you would normally have. And that's because people who pay their HOA fees to maintain their front yards and those streets also want to have beautiful open spaces to go to. So you have a main open space area in the center that has the pool and Ramada and barbecue and totlot and, and grass, and you also have a spot in the southwest corner where you can throw, throw frisbees and do other activities on a flat grass surface. Another important feature of this project is that red line you see. We did not feel it was appropriate to back these homes right up to their adjacent homes in Ashland Ranch. Because a lot of times that creates friction, where you're trying to back a smaller, a smaller lot to a larger lot. So we created a buffer that's a minimum of 27 feet and is almost triple that in other places. Wherever we could do two rows of trees, we did. We worked with the adjacent neighbors and were able to secure their support. We gave them choices of trees. And then we put in this trail system with low lighting, low ballard lighting. That's important because now it's an activated space where people can actually walk, walk their families, walk their dog, around the entire community in a protected environment. And that activates that space so that it's not just kind of out of sight, out of mind. It's maintained over time. We have two access points, one, the main one to Valvista, excuse me, Ray, and the secondary one to Valvista. There's some comment that we might have access into Ashland Ranch. There is no direct access, either pedestrian or vehicular, into Ashland Ranch. All access is to the arterials. This is the entryway, just to show that a lot of care is being taken to make this really an upscale look. These homes will be 2,000 to 2,400 square feet, and will be selling in the high threes, which is a, an upscale home to, to move into. Certainly not a starter home. Again, so that all fits down into that environment. We were asked about whether or not this would degrade the property values in Ashland Ranch. And we said, "Well, we've checked all the prices that homes have sold for, and they've been in the high threes to the mid-500s. Our homes are going to be in the high threes." So per square foot basis, we're actually higher, but certainly won't degrade any of the homes in Ashland Ranch, especially with the large buffer of, of trees around the exterior. This shows that buffer that's adjacent to the immediately adjoining homes. Wherever we can, we have two rows, and where we can't, we have one, but it's a considerable distance away. And on the second level of our homes, we've agreed to put in kind of that rain glass so that even though they're not directed necessarily to, and there really isn't a privacy issue still, we thought it was important, and some of the neighbors asked for it. We did have comments raised, as Keith mentioned. One was, there would be more traffic associated with this use than with the commercial use if, if it were to develop. So we did a traffic study and demonstrated to the neighbors that our development approves about 960 cars a day, whereas commercial would be 7,800, or about eight times more traffic. And that's even at peak hour as well. The next issue was, "Well, we're going to overcrowd Ashland Ranch School." And we checked both with the school principal and with Gilbert School District and found that actually the student population at Ashland Ranch School has been going down. And so it's now, this is, this document is from the Gilbert School District, and that, you can see that the latest number is about 700, a little over 700. So actually, the principal said, "We, we grant waivers to get more kids to come into this school." So we, we're thrilled that you're going to have students coming here because Ashland Ranch has aged in place over 20 years, and so the student population has changed over time. These are the types of trees that are being proposed and selected by the neighbors. This is the values that we looked at, so we were able to look at every home sold in Ashland Ranch over the last 12 months compared to ours. We think we're, will be an asset to the neighborhood, not, will not negatively affect values at all. In fact, there might actually be people in Ashland Ranch that are tired of maintaining a, a yard and want to move into one of these beautiful facilities. Not only did we have, and Keith was not up to date on all of the meetings we held, we actually held five neighborhood meetings. Two were for the whole area, and three were for the immediately adjoining folks. And then we went out door-to-door with these new exhibits that you've seen, because these exhibits that we're showing you tonight have only been available for a couple of months. So we felt it was important for people to, to not just see a two-dimensional elevation, but to see actually what the street scene would look like. And when we were armed with those, most of the people were willing to sign saying, "We think this would be a, a great asset to our area." And we have about nine letters of support. We have a few folks who were willing to come here tonight in support, and we appreciate the time you've given me to explain the project. Be glad to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Quick question. You did mention about Ashland Elementary School, and the principal would love to have more children at his school. Have you, did you talk to the, the school district as it relates to bus routing in the neighborhood? Do they have any idea how they might plan, you know, a pickup in that neighborhood? Because I know the streets are kind of, you know, wide enough for a fire truck and so forth, but what about possible bus traffic flow for pickup? Was there any discussion?
Well, we did not have a specific discussion with the Gilbert School District about bringing buses through this, but 26 feet- buses through this, but 26 feet of width is more than sufficient for a bus to come in, although you could really go to the main points of access and have the children walk to there as well, which might be easier.
Thank you. I don't see any additional questions at this time, Steve, so we will ask for the individual who wishes to comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one card from somebody that said that they don't wish to speak and they're for the project. And the second person is Amy Peterson and she would like to speak and she is also for the project. Amy, I think you know the drill. You can come down and give us your name and city or town of residence, please.
My name is Amy Peterson. I live in Gilbert. I've lived here for about 30 years. My husband and I bought our home 10 years ago. We border the vacant lot. We planned to live there for about five years, fell in love with the area and decided to remodel. We doubled our house size. We overbuilt the neighborhood, but we did it because we love it. We turned it into our dream home and we're thrilled to be there. When we heard of this project, we were horrified that 101 homes were going to be backing us. We really had wanted to buy the property ourselves and subdivide it into acre lots and live there. That wasn't possible. So to go from up to 101 homes, that was shocking. There's a neighborhood just across Ray that we don't love. There is quite a bit of crime happening in that neighborhood. There is high turnover of renters. And we were afraid this was going to be the same drill. When we went to the first meeting, we were almost immediately made at ease to see the kind of project that they were building, that it was a completely different story than these cluster homes across the street. We were thrilled that they would work with us. We were thrilled to have three different meetings that they met with just those of us that bordered the property and worked, I thought, very hard to help us to be happy and to appease some of the concerns that we had. We're happy with the distances. I will, we will have three homes bordering our lot alone and was, but we're super happy. We're thankful that they're bringing this project in as opposed especially to a commercial site. That would have been a completely different story with a lot more light, a lot more noise, a lot more traffic. So we're totally support this.
Thank you, Amy. All right, at this time, if there's no questions from the council, we can close the public hearing and entertain a motion or make a quick comment.
I have a quick comment and then I'll make the motion, Mayor. I just want, I went to the two meetings with the neighbors and to say that there was opposition at the beginning is an understatement. It was quite an event, but I want to say thank you and well done to the neighbors, to the attorneys, to the porters, to everyone involved in this town staff because this was a great final solution to what was a pretty contentious meeting with the neighbors. And so to Amy and all the other neighbors over there, thank you for working with the developers on this. I think the end product's a great, great product. And, oh, I'll hold my motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We and the council have spoken many times about the protecting of our commercial properties throughout Gilbert because, you know, those properties are a real lifeblood as revenue streams come in. And when we look at these as a one-off cases from multiple times, you know, we analyze it. So I spent time with our economic development team just to go through the numbers and I appreciate the additional numbers in our council packet. And with the support of the chamber, you know, they also are very much trying to protect all that commercial property as well. So going through the numbers, understanding how San Tan Mall has grown, how the shopping center to the north has grown, how the intersection of Williamsfield and Val Vista, it doesn't look like this property is going to meet what the dreams were. And going through staff, I'm very much in favor of supporting this project as is.
Thank you. And I will just chime in one thing that isn't directly related to this, although same vicinity and same area and so definitely would affect both Ashland Ranch and this corner property. I am very much in support of this project, but I do have some serious concerns about some of the accidents that we've been having on Val Vista Road. So I, in conjunction with this conversation, recognizing we're going to have more residents that need safety as well, I'd love to direct staff, if possible, to really explore the speed on Val Vista Road on this stretch. It curves quite dramatically and there have been some pretty serious accidents along that stretch. So we just want to make sure that we touch on that. Our goal, first goal as a council is to keep our community members safe. So that's a side note, but something I felt like was pertinent as we discussed this area. So at this time, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 12 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Item 12A and 12B.
Second?
Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 12A. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 12A and make a quick preface statement. I'm grateful that there's so many individuals here to discuss this agenda item. I think it's really important for us. In a conversation with our town attorney earlier today, we, I'm going to ask that the, from the council perspective, that we continue this item ultimately, but because we have so many residents here and because it's important for us to hear some feedback, I would like us to take about 15 minutes to do some public hearing agenda so that we can get feedback. This is not a done deal. This is an ordinance in progress, some changes in progress, and the feedback will be helpful to us. I know that both police, Parks and Rec, and other departments have weighed in on this item and issue, but we know we still have some more work to do in order to make this right and actually to comply with state law, which is a big piece of the changes that are occurring here. I just also want to make another statement about Airbnb and also home sharing type products. I got a couple emails and I know that that's a big concern for a lot of the residents, but this is not a, this agenda item is not specific to that. There is a state law that protects home sharing and Airbnb that we as a council unfortunately are preempted by. And so there is nothing that we can do as a council to regulate Airbnb or regulate Airbnb activity. So not just to call out them, but any VRBO or any of those specific, home sharing type products. So we've been frustrated by it as well. So if that's, from the emails that I got, that seemed to be the predominant issue and unfortunately, that's not something that we can address as a council. So I just wanted to make sure that we made that clear and we'd love to move forward with the comments from the public on this item. Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three that did not indicate whether or not they would like to speak or not to speak. So if I can just give you, read your name if you could tell me yes or no, you don't wish to speak. Joe Dwyer? No. Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Burnham? Would you like to speak or no? And Mr. and Mrs. Pennington? Would you like to speak or no? Yes? Thank you. Okay, Mayor, then we will start with the folks that would like to speak. That would be Nancy Church. If you could come down to the podium and just give us your name and town of residence, town or city of residence, since I'm not sure. Lisa, could we put two minutes on the clock for each speaker, please? Thank you. Or Patrick.
Nancy Church. I've been living in Gilbert for about 30-some years now. So I've been in several different neighborhoods. The one I'm in now, I've been-
Mrs. Church, could you move closer to the microphone or pull it down? Thank you. Thank you.
Can you hear better now?
Yes, thank you.
Once again, I've been in Gilbert about 30 years and the neighborhood I've been in now is Circle G2 and it's about 20 years in that neighborhood. This is a small neighborhood, only about 37 homes and it's pretty close-knit. The one thing that I have an issue with is not the B&amp;B piece of it, it's just the large events that happen and they really disrupt everything because it's, you know, 30, 40, 50 cars sometimes. Sometimes they don't pay attention to the people on the streets. There's no sidewalks in our neighborhood. This neighborhood is one of those, it's kind of like a little secret enclave that a lot of people don't know about. Every contractor, everybody that comes to the house, oh, I never knew this was here. This is such a great neighborhood. Huge trees, everybody loves it there. And we just want to keep that little neighborhood safe and, you know, the way we want it. And these large events just kind of disrupt everything and kind of cause everybody to be not at ease. Some of the things that I worry about is there's a lot more little kids in the neighborhood now than there used to be and the people don't pay attention to the little kids. There's no sidewalks, like I said, and it's only an in and out. You can't, there's no way to get out. It's a, you know, come in a couple, one street, you got to go out the same way. So that's my big concern is it's just changing the environment for all of us that really love the neighborhood. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Barb Dwyer. If you could come down and give us your name and city or town of residence, please.
Hi, I'm Barb Dwyer and my residency is Gilbert. Been here for about 30 years. I live at 2261 East Escondido Place, which is the same Circle G2. And again, I'm going to go at it from the venue perspective, the Airbnb, I understand that kind of took over everybody and one of those unexpected things, kind of like Uber and Lyft. And so I understand that, but what the issue is events. And so we have had quite a lot of disruption and from a police and fire perspective, when there's a large event, whether it's a wedding or a graduation and you have vehicles parked on both sides, I do wonder if emergency vehicles can get through. That's one issue. We have a lot of traffic that comes through. You can imagine with a large event, whatever it may be, people are turning around in other people's driveways. We don't have streetlights, we don't have sidewalks. So it is a safety issue. We also don't have a stop sign. When you come in west on Redfield and you hit 158, there's no stop sign and the house in question is directly across the street. So a lot of times cars just go straight into that driveway. So there's a safety issue there. We also have had situations where the people who come in, they don't know our community and they set off fireworks when they're not supposed to be. We've actually had a gunshot and murder in our neighborhood and so that just, everybody went crazy. They thought a gun was going off. We have horses and other farm animals and they get quite spooked by that as well. I feel it's very unfair to the people who actually rent the Airbnb and think it's okay to have a venue in a neighborhood. It's one of the most important days of their lives and the police are showing up almost every weekend because neighbors all around are complaining of music and noise. And typically with those events, sometimes there's alcohol involved as well. So now we have impaired drivers. So there's, I get the Airbnb, that's part of our culture, but the venue part is the part that I want to be very careful to just say, careful on eliminating permits. Thank you.
Barb, can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
It sounds like it's one particular neighbor, home in your neighborhood.
Yes, it is.
Okay. That's probably a different issue for us and so we'll need to address that.
Okay. Because I guess I don't want a venue permit eliminated that we're, that's almost the only recourse we have is it's required for-
It's actually not required under the current code and that's, I think, part of the issue.
Okay.
So there should be other laws that are, well, there should be other laws that could be enforced.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for filling in that blank for me.
Okay.
Thanks, Barb. Julie Bader, if you could come down and give us your name and city or town of residence, because I know you live in Gilbert.
I didn't think I'd see you people so soon again. We're all familiar with the event venue in my neighborhood and our six-year battle to preserve the integrity of my neighborhood. We also know that that venue said, well, if we don't get our way, we'll just be an Airbnb and we'll be able to do whatever we want. I'm not aware of all the code changes and how they will or won't impact what's going on in my immediate area. However, I just want to impress how important it is to us that no codes be changed that do help protect our property rights. We respect the Airbnb concept and it is part of our current society, however, and we respect property rights, but we also hope that the property rights of the people who surround such venues are also protected within the code where it's possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you, Julie. Pamela, and I don't want to kill your last name, so please just come down and introduce yourself and give us your city or town of residence, please. I see you're a Gilbert resident.
Hi, Pamela Rochadle, 23-year Gilbert resident in our current home. I am the home, I live in White Fence Farms and we back directly up to the Circle G properties in question. So I get the full brunt of the noise. It's weekends, weekdays, late into the evening, and I'm not disputing the Airbnb either, and I just want to reiterate that, but I feel like we're having a clash between residential and business. That's where I see a big clash. And I'm hoping we can get more teeth and do something to keep it residential and not business. I think that's all I had to add. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for the email exchange, too. It's helpful.
Thank you. Gerald or Gail Pennington? Just give us your name and town of residence, please.
Hello, my name is Gail Pennington. I'm resident of Gilbert and a resident of Circle G ranches for 36 years. I basically found out about this about three hours ago, so I don't have a whole lot that would not mirror what everyone else has said, and I do agree, the B&amp;B is something we can live with. I do know of a time, we've had multiple weddings in our neighborhood over the many, many years and they've been handled quite well and they usually come to an end at 10 o'clock and everyone respects that. And the extra cars we've dealt with. On one occasion, when the B&amp;B had their event, there was another event also going on in the neighborhood and the cars were parked 100% on both sides of the road, all the way around the circle. One resident came in and almost hit somebody that came darting out between the neighbors. My husband has pictures. They were parked in front of the fire hydrant. Mainly this event as a large event after hours, this is a quiet neighborhood that enters from one way, goes out in one way. It's not even on a main arterial and that is our difficulty with this situation.
Thank you. Mr. or Mrs. Burnham, if you'd like to come down and give us your name and town of residence, please.
So sorry, we can't hear.
Can't hear you. Thank you.
There's a really loud air conditioner that blows until 10:00 PM. I know it goes off right at 10:00. I think it's warm in here, but hopefully we won't deliberate that one.
Okay, I'm Louise Burnham and we've lived in this Circle G that everybody's talking about for 35 years. Nice, quiet, or it used to be a nice, quiet neighborhood. And we're the couple that she referred to. We were coming home, it was around 8:30, 9 o'clock at night, cars parked on both sides, so there's only enough room for one vehicle. And, I mean, their cars bumper to bumper pretty much. And we live in Circle G Unit 2, so we have to go around the corner and because they were parked all the way around the corner, we were, you know, having to slow down and almost stop, you know, to see if it was safe to even get into where we live. Well, thank goodness we were almost stopped because a lady came out between the cars. There's no lighting in our neighborhood and I don't know what it had done if we'd have hit her. If we hadn't almost been stopped or slowed down, you know, there would have been a terrible accident. So that's my concern is the parking and the noise. I suffer from insomnia. I've lost night sleep. They have mariachi bands and all kind of stuff going on in the backyard and so, you know, I lose sleep. sleep. That's my main concern.
Thank you. Ramar Ogeron, if you could come down and give us your name and town of residence, please. That's my last one, Mayor.
Hi, my name's Ramar Ogeron. I live in Gilbert, and I've lived in Gilbert since 1990, and in the neighborhood, the Circle G neighborhood that we're talking about since 1999. And it is a little slice of Mayberry, except on the weekends when it's a little slice of Woodstock. We have been working with the town of Gilbert for most of this year on something called code compliance, so I was under the impression that the effort that we're putting into this was moving the ball down the field. I wasn't aware that this was not something that Gilbert could address because it was under the Airbnb, because I thought the Airbnb was covered by the state, you know, the law that Governor Ducey passed, and I thought that what had happened is that the homeowner had sort of stepped across the line and turned the Airbnb into a large event venue. And so I have here a small folder of, that represents a much larger folder from home, of police reports, of emails back and forth between different neighbors, and Debbie D'Orio, and Frank, and Bettina, and different ones from the town of Gilbert that have been helping us. And so we've all been kind of working to try to, the goal is to get this venue to follow the code. And if we can get to that point, then we would have, our understanding is we would have a say in whether they could continue. If we came down here and put a good faith effort into it, that they would have to stop, because honestly and truly, this is affecting our way of life pretty significantly. And as you can tell from all the different stories, it's not what Gilbert should be, it's not what our neighborhood should be. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the communications from citizens. And we appreciate all of you coming tonight and giving us feedback as we make sure that we address the real challenges. I will add that we have noise ordinances already in place, separate from, what we're discussing tonight is a special event permit process, which is separate from these other codes. Parking, obviously, you cannot block fire hydrants already, that's in our code, and it's all over town, not just in residential, but also in commercial areas. We do have noise ordinances, and our police department now carries, what are they called, the noise oh-decibel readers, which they didn't use to have, but we've made sure that they have some, a few of those available to them. And so some of the things that you guys are just obviously lighting off fireworks or aerial fireworks is not allowed in the town of Gilbert. So we do have laws in place. It sounds to me like the laws that we have need to be enforced, and that we do need to take another look at maybe the size of the event. In no way are there supposed to be events held every weekend or consecutively in our neighborhoods. That's not, that's not the intent of the laws that we have, and it's not how our zoning works in the town of Gilbert. So I think we want to be very careful and cautious about that. We also don't want to limit the family who has their daughter getting married, having her reception in their backyard or home either, and so we want to be careful about how we implement this. Counsel, do you have other, yeah, Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, two things. One question for you. Is the league doing anything in this space that might be helpful, anything? You've been in more of those meetings.
So we have very much felt like the state preempted the cities and towns. We obviously have zoning in place for a reason, and it's a little unfortunate for us. In a place like Gilbert, where we don't have as many hotel options, I can see a purpose for Airbnb, but it's not the way that it's being described now. Renee, will you speak to the state law and the league's efforts? We've obviously had discussions about it, but feeling like we can do something about it, we pretty, pretty much felt like we can't, but Renee can touch on that.
Certainly. And Mayor and Council, and I think you guys have already talked about the state law, there is a section in Title IX which governs cities and towns that does by and large preempt us on the regulation of vacation rentals or short-term rentals. What we have seen, Councilmember Taylor, is since the passage of that law, we have seen what I would say are neighboring cities and towns, and perhaps, you know, Gilbert would characterize as activities maybe beyond the scope of what was originally contemplated with the Airbnb or home-sharing platforms that are in existence today. So if you may recall, back in August, when Amy gave the presentation on league resolutions, there was one regarding a review of the short-term rental statutes here in Arizona. That resolution did pass, and the league has secured Representative Kavanaugh, John Kavanaugh, who represents Scottsdale and Fountain Hills. So he will be running the legislation. As far as the specific provisions or tenets, that's still in discussion. That's sort of where the political, I think, sensitivity that the mayor kind of hit on in terms of the balance and frankly, on the municipal side, providing the evidence of where we are seeing issues exist. And so just to hit on maybe some of the elements that could appear in that legislation, we have seen an increase of concern over about, over event center, event space, as opposed to a traditional, I guess what I would characterize as the pitch of home-sharing, which is an alternative to a hotel for your family to stay, not as opposed to a host for an event or location. And then we've also just seen elements where in some cities, individuals, as opposed to, again, I'm going to go with the stereotypical home-sharing idea of, "I have a spare room, I have a guest house, I'm going to put that up on a home-sharing site." What we're starting to see is it become a true commercial enterprise, where investors will go into a neighborhood or a condo complex and never reside there. They just own them purely for listing on the home-sharing sites, and then as a result of that, the amount of parking and therefore traffic you see in some of these areas is kind of in exceedance of what the, how the complex was designed. So that gives you kind of a sense of the area they're looking at. You know, it's very similar to what the discussion just heard here in terms of noise, parking, and some other items.
Mayor, thank you for the information you shared, and Renee, thank you for that. Maybe there's some feedback from this discussion that can be shared with Senator Kavanaugh to refine, you know, whatever he's doing. So thank you for that. I do have one other question on this. It's a little bit off this particular topic, but still on this agenda item. Patrick, it might be a question for you on this one here. One of the provisions is to remove the exemption for schools and churches. I can give you the reference on that in there. I'm just wondering a little bit about the background on that, why that exception is being removed.
Because it's private, it wouldn't be considered town-owned property, so the way the law is written, it only, you'd only require a special event permit for town-owned property, and since the town doesn't own schools or churches, then there would be no reason for them to have an exemption-
Got it, okay.
...because they already have access.
Thank you. That helps. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments from council?
I do have a question for Chris. I want to go back to the comment about the fireworks, and maybe this is something that we may have to take offline as well, but as relates to an aerial fireworks today, I think that from our code or whatever, it's not considered criminal, but it might be considered civil. And can you elaborate on that? Because I'm not sure how much, I mean, the noise ordinance of exploding, obviously, you know, that could be a chargeable one, but I think if an aerial flies, I'm not sure it's a criminal charge that our PD can actually do anything with. I think it may be a civils. Can you elaborate on that?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, I'm not sure if it's civil or criminal, but it is a state law that prohibits aerials across the state.
And I just was trying to figure out, as our team sees when these aerial-
Commander, soon-to-be Assistant Chief Bryce is telling us that that's a civil.
It is civil, then. Sorry, I was, you know, tunnel vision here, Chief. But I guess the question would be, do we-
I do want us to be a little bit careful about discussing this as a specific ordinance, because it's not agendized, it's not part of our, this code that we're looking at. But Commander Bryce?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook and members of council, yes, fireworks in general are, is a civil offense, which does limit our ability to investigate and get into certain places. So I think that answers the question. There are, within, within the scope of the noise ordinance, we can look at different things as well, though.
Thank you. All right. With that, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 12A and entertain a motion for continuance.
Mayor, I, motion that we continue it. I'm not sure what date we had in mind. Are we thinking sixty days?
I think we talked about the first meeting in December, is that right? I'm looking at Nancy Davidson, who's helping us with this.
Thumbs up.
And that is December 6th.
Okay, I move that we continue to December 6th meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Just quick before we vote, just to confirm that we will continue what we started at the last meeting as far as the review of special event permits on private property, that we won't make any additional changes to that as of now. I see Denise and Robert convening. Is that, we're good? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was still in place as we move forward. Thank you. Please vote. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
That motion carries with a seven-oh vote. Thank you again for all of your feedback tonight. That will be very helpful for us as we look for the right solutions on this item. Administrative items is what comes next for us on this agenda. Agenda item 13, is there a motion to accept the budget report?
No moves.
Second.
Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a seven-oh vote. Are there any reports on boards, commissions, or committees? Seeing none. A report from the town manager on current events.
Mayor, members of the council, a couple items today involving town employees. We had three retirements today of some longtime town employees. Chris Kingsmore in the clerk's office has retired, Linda Tunny in Parks, and Kelly Russell in Finance, so we wish them of their life and in their well-earned retirements. Want to recognize some employees for some great service they've extended to our residents, starting with Jared Tau, who is a heavy equipment operator. Tau, Tau, me and names. Jared Tau, heavy equipment operator in environmental services, who is kind and friendly in how he goes about his duties, has a young man on his route who looks forward to trash pickup day and seeing Jared, and he invited Jared to his birthday party, and Jared attended on his day off and was the hit of the party and made the young man's nay. It was very kind of him to do so. Officer Michael Dietz, Gilbert police officer, who is also a school resource officer for us, he built a friendship with a young autistic high school student and provided him with a police uniform for the young man for Halloween, and it meant the world to him and his family. And then lastly, November, PD has a fundraiser they are doing for cancer prevention, research, and education called No Shave November. They do have a few rules and regulations they need to follow as it relates to facial hair, but they have raised over fifteen hundred dollars so far for that effort. So we thank all those employees for going above and beyond in how they serve our residents and our community.
Thank you. Report from council on current events.
Mayor, I have one thing to report. We have two students from the Chandler-Gilbert Community College leadership class in the back of the room. That would be Kylie Burkhart.
Three.
Oh, we have three. We have Kylie Burkhart and Taylor. I don't know the other person's name, so I know that we have three of them back there, and I just wanted to, yes, they had to come to a council meeting or a town meeting for the part of their leadership class, so I thought I would shout out to them.
Thank you. Just a couple things from me as it relates to current events. One is the Gilbert Off the Street Festival is this weekend, a really exciting event. High fives to our, our special event team here in the town of Gilbert for all the hard work to make this happen. It is really, really amazing, so we invite all of the residents out to see that, both tomorrow from four to nine and on Saturday from nine to seven. Lots of food, some artists. Are we getting the chalk people back? Not this year? Okay, well, I'm sure there's other really cool things associated with that, so thank you for that. Also, I just want to start the heads up a little bit early this time, but our Gilbert Days is coming up quickly. It's in the next couple of weeks. It's also the half marathon and 10K. What that means to the residents who maybe don't run or who don't attend the parade is that there is a tremendous amount of rerouting that will go on in the town for that morning. So we want to give residents a heads up that that's going to be occurring and ensure that everyone knows ahead of time where those street closures are. All of that information can be found on our website and through our social media channels. And last but not least, Councilmember Jordan Ray is celebrating a birthday on Saturday, and we wanted to make sure everyone knew he was a whole year older. So Councilmember Ray, happy birthday. And we do have some treats that we will bring out after we adjourn tonight. So happy birthday. Hope you have a great day. All right, with all of that, I don't think there's any additional items. This meeting is now adjourned.